Good afternoon. Welcome to the March 14, 2019 meeting of the City County Planning Board. Would you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Today's meeting is being broadcast live on TV 13. It will be rebroadcast at 10:00 a.m. Friday morning, again at 4:00 p.m. Sunday afternoon. Before we begin, I want to ask Vice Chair Mr. Leake if he would go over the rules governing our proceedings here today.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our first order of business today will be the consent agenda. These are items for which the petitioner is requesting withdrawal or continuance, or items for which the planning board staff has recommended approval, and no one has signed up to speak in opposition. For our public hearings today, each side will have a total of 12 minutes. There is no rebuttal, period. Once the public hearing is closed and the board goes into work session, no one is permitted to speak unless the planning board asks them a question. The items under Section B of our agenda will require final action by the elected body, either the City Council or Board of Commissioners. As such, votes taken today are recommendations which are considered by the City Council or Board of Commissioners during its review of the request. For general use zoning requests, the planning board must consider the full range of uses allowed in the zoning district being requested. The petitioner may not refer to a specific indicated use of the property. For special use district zoning requests, the petitioners must identify the intended use or uses of the site and give specific details on how the site will be developed. If you are addressing the board today, we would ask that before you begin, your comments, please give us your name, address, and zip code for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Leake. First item of business, approval of the minutes of the February 14 and 28 meetings. Mr. Brown, would you add a comment on...
Yeah, I just wanted to be more specific. On the minutes of the 28th, which was, we refer to as our work session, it mentions in Section 4 that I brought up concerns of stormwater runoff in a number of subdivisions. The primary subdivision I brought up was Briar Cliff Village, which becomes even more important based on the agenda today.
Okay. But no change to the minutes?
I think that's on the, at least the video record now.
Okay. Is there a motion to move approval?
Second.
Motion, Mr. Lamb. Second, Mr. Leake. Any further discussion? Those in favor? Opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. Now I'll call on the... Mr. Corley, doing the consent agenda?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Doing it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, and we will start with B1, which is W 3397. This is a site plan amendment, which is previously F 1325. This was continued from the February 14 meeting, and the applicant has submitted another request to continue. It met the deadline established in the planning board bylaws, so that one will also be automatically continued to the April 11 meeting. Next item on the consent agenda is W 3398, request to rezone from PBS to RS9. The site is about a little more than one acre at the intersection of Styris Ferry Road and Laura Road. This is a photo of the subject property. Both of these houses that you can see in the photo are on the subject property. Existing buildings are residential in character, as is the neighborhood to the west of the subject property. The area plan recommends commercial use, but that was based on the zoning of the property at the time that the plan was adopted. Staff is generally supportive of downzoning to less intensive zoning districts, so we recommend approval of this request.
No one has signed up. Is anyone here opposed to this recommendation? So no one declared the public hearing closed?
Move approval.
Second. Motion, Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs. Any discussion? Those in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Next item on the consent agenda is W 3399. This is a request to rezone property from AG to RS20. This property is also a little more than one acre and is on the south side of Glen High Road, west of Union Cross Road. Here's a photo of the subject property. This is the subject property, if you can see my cursor and the zoning sign. It's about where this cursor is. The area plan recommends low-density residential uses, and the property abuts RS20 zoning to the east, so staff recommends approval of this request.
Anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Say no, declared the public hearing closed?
Move approval.
Second. Motion, Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs. Any discussion? Those in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item on the consent agenda is W 3400. This is to rezone property at the intersection of Academy Street and Peters Creek Parkway from HB and RSQ to GBL. Property is approximately 3.76 acres. Here's a photo. The subject property is currently occupied by Budget Inn, and then this building in the background here is also on the subject property. The area plan recommends a mixture of uses on the subject property, and it was actually rezoned to GBL in May of last year, with the reversion clause to take effect after September 30th of last year. If the property did not change ownership, that didn't happen, the zoning reverted back to HB and RSQ. Staff recommends approval of this request because it's similar to the one that was already approved.
Thanks, sir. Again, no one has signed up. Anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Say no one, declared the public hearing closed?
Could I get some clarification?
Sure.
Will this go back into a similar period of time?
And, uh, reversion?
No, there's no reversion clause with this request.
There's no reversing because that was done by City Council last time?
That's correct.
Okay. But it will go to City Council from here?
Yes.
Yes.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Leake. Any discussion?
I just had another question. The driveway onto Academy Street, could you tell me what's happening there? Is it going to be a full access to this property?
We don't have a site plan, so we don't know for sure. I believe some discussion was had about that access being for emergency only.
That's correct. That's the condition, right, because of limited site visibility there.
So that will be a condition of this?
Yes, that's the first condition, that it's emergency access only.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Have a motion for approval. Those in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item on the consent agenda is W 3402. It is a request to rezone from HBS to HBS. The applicant was looking to add a use that was not allowed in the previous HBS zoning district. The property is about 2.41 acres on the north side of Country Club Road, across from South Wind Drive. The applicant submitted a request to continue this case to the next meeting per the planning board bylaws. This was submitted before the deadline, and it will be automatically continued to the April meeting. And the next item on the consent agenda is W 3403, a request to rezone from IP to GBS. It's about five and a half acres on Sturmer Park Circle, which is north of Shadow Lawn Drive and a little west of its intersection with University Parkway. Here's a photo of the subject property. There is an existing building on the site that was used for, I don't want to say...
It was an assisted living facility.
Yeah, assisted living. I'm sorry, the words escaped me. The applicant, here is the site plan that the applicant submitted with this request. They are not proposing to make any changes to the site, other than to add a concrete pad under the existing dumpster. The area plan recommends institutional uses for this site, which the applicant proposes. All the proposed uses are allowed in IP, with the exception of Group Care Facility C, which is the use they added. That use is only allowed in the GB district with special use zoning, even though it is classified as an institutional use. That's why they're requesting a commercial zoning district, so staff recommends approval of this request.
Okay, thank you. Anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Say no one, declared the public hearing closed?
Move approval.
Second. Motion, Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Leake. Yes, sir.
It looks like the site plan just barely comes, I can't see because we have an S there, comes right up to the access road, but doesn't touch the access road. Is that right?
No, it does connect to Sturmer.
It does?
Yes, it does. Yes, that was a requirement, yeah.
What we experienced on a site visit there was that that road really has difficulty handling two vehicles at the same time, one coming towards you and one going out. Any thoughts from the applicant about making that more accessible to cars? And particularly, I think we experienced the bus, because there's a bus route that actually goes into that road. Any thoughts about that, or thinking about that from the applicant?
I don't believe there are any comments from transportation about the need to widen.
The only thing I would say is that, you know, our anticipated trip generation in the staff report, I think we've got it 271 trips a day, and if you spread that over a day's time, that's a fairly low number, even for a street of that size. So I believe that's why there was a comfort level with what's out there and what's being proposed.
Well, I mean, if it's like most shift changes, you have employees coming in groups, and what we experienced were, I think, was two buses in a matter of five minutes, making it impossible for anyone to get out or get in. So I would just recommend to, probably to the county, that they look at making that accessible to folks that want to visit and go out, or else make it one way. I guess the other option.
Are you talking about Sturmer Park Circle?
Yeah.
Well, it's a public street maintained by the city.
Yeah. So, oh, so the city needs to think about that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Have a motion for approval. Those in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item on the consent agenda is W 3404, which is a combination site plan amendment and final development plan of property previously approved, the docket W 3158. It's about 13 and a half acres at Pecan Lane and Solomon Drive, west of Union Cross Road. The applicant has submitted a request for continuous to change their petition from site plan amendment and final development plan to rezoning and final development plan. They submitted that request prior to the deadline established in the bylaws, so it's automatically continued to the April meeting. And then the last item on the consent agenda is Item C1, PBR 201901. It's a proposed adult daycare in an existing shopping center. It's in a GB zoning district, and the applicant doesn't propose to make any changes to the site. Staff recommends approval of this request.
Move approval. Second. Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs. Any discussion? Those in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. Turn it over to Gary now.
Well, now here, Item B5.
Zoning docket W 3401, and the petitioner is Carol Powell, Henry Heitman Jr., and Gilbert Frank. The site is 3.02 acres, located on the southwest corner of Renolda Road and Briar Cliff Road intersection. The request is a special use rezoning from the District of RS9 Residential Single Family to RM8S, RM18S Multifamily, up to 18 units per acre. And the uses include multifamily uses, except for the use of residential building multifamily, which is your typical apartment use, but it does include life care community. This is a legacy growth management area, showing the subject property there along Renolda Road, just west of an activity center within the yellow suburban neighborhoods growth management area three. Zoning map showing the subject property, highlighted there in yellow. There are currently three single-family homes located on the property. Again, it's zoned RS9. You have RS9 zoning to the south and to the southwest, along in the Town and Country Estates neighborhood. Some LOS, limited office zoning to the east, a bank, and some institutional uses across Renolda Road's own GO, general office, and to the west is another assisted living facility, zoned RM18S as well. Aerial photograph showing the subject property. And the area plan, this is the West Suburban Area Plan update adopted in 2018. It shows a different color for each recommended land use. Yellow is single-family residential. Red is commercial, for instance. Blue is institutional. And the subject property there is shown for office and low-intensity commercial uses. So that would allow for retail uses, including restaurant without drive-through. If you look closer, you can see the area is within a green border, and that's the growth pattern that's recommended for this stretch of Renolda Road, which is the suburban form. So we did have some discussion about building placement, and the request is consistent with the area plan in regard to building placement, because suburban form is recommended here. Urban form, where buildings are pulled up to the street in a more pedestrian-oriented fashion, are recommended closer back to the activity center that I mentioned earlier. These images are taken on site. This is looking into the site there from Renolda Road, right there at the entrance of Briar Cliff. Renolda Road is classified as a boulevard. It has ample capacity, and it also is a transit line as well. Again, looking out Renolda Road, you can see some of the uses across Renolda. Into Briar Cliff there, this is looking west, southwest. You have the subject property on the right, and the recently made construction entrance to Briar Cliff Village, single-family subdivision there on the left. This is looking back in the curve there towards Renolda Road. There will be, on the proposed site plan, an emergency access only, just probably off to the left there of this image. And looking across Renolda there. This is the site plan, and some of you may be familiar with this site. We've seen it four times in the last six years. The last one you looked at about three years ago in 2016 was similar to this, similar design. It was for RM18S. That was for actually conventional multifamily units, 54 units, just under 18 units per acre. This is for a life care community and not your conventional apartment. So the trip generation, parking counts are a little bit less for this type of use, and it's basically for people that are disabled or over 55 in age. Subject property is, you can see there, shown the building in tan. One entrance on Renolda Road at the far western end, parking in between the building and Renolda Road, and then one emergency access only that will be gated onto Briar Cliff. Planning staff worked with them on the appearance. We have attractive building elevations that I'll show you that were included in your packet, as well as the appearance along Renolda Road. So they have agreed to a Type 1 buffer yard instead of a Type, instead of a 10-foot street yard along Renolda. So that has eight evergreen plantings, which the street yard does not have per 100 feet. So that's some additional screening to kind of screen that front parking lot along Renolda. Also, they, in response to some citizen concerns from one of the neighborhood meetings that they have, they've removed this retaining wall that was shown in the back. I think there's maybe a 25- or 30-foot grade change from the top of the slope side to the bottom down here in the lower southwestern corner. So they have increased the building height to three floors, but they've removed the retaining wall. They're showing a 20-foot Type 2 buffer yard along Briar Cliff, which would be slightly widened with a sidewalk and curbed gutter, and they've planted this slope here. The plan that you have before you has a note right here that needed a little bit more clarification, and we have a condition that I'm going to show you that clarifies that just a little bit more about the evergreen plantings that they've agreed to in this area. Also, that condition is switched out. We're removing the condition that was here for evergreen plantings along the dumpster. The previous plan had the dumpster right here, and that's what the plan that was recommended for approval by you several years ago, had the dumpster there, very visible in that corner, so they agreed to put brick, same as the material around the principal structure, and some additional plantings. This revised plan has the dumpster location over here, so it's not nearly as visible. Plus, that Type 1 buffer yard will wrap around here anyway. So we've removed that condition for some additional plantings along this dumpster. There's really not room for it anyway, because there's a sidewalk that goes right around that. Of course, now we have the lighting ordinance that will impact this property, so there's no lighting condition that was what recommended earlier. And again, this use really, the trip generation is right on about 135 trips per day, what we would expect under RS9 scenario. So from a traffic generation standpoint, we really see this as a low-intensity use, and, you know, the area plan does recommend commercial, low-intensity commercial or office use, but we're comfortable with this because it's semi-institutional, semi-residential, and the traffic generation. So technically, the specific use is not consistent with the area plan, but from an intensity standpoint, we think it's a pretty good match, particularly with the site design and the elevations. Let me move on to the elevations there. Differentiation of materials for each floor, pitched roofs. In analysis, the site is located along a growth corridor, as identified in Legacy, where increased densities are recommended. This is a growth corridor. It's close to basic services, employment, transit, and sidewalks. So there's the potential for residents here to walk to employment, to walk to basic services, and to have transit and sidewalks. So this is really where we want to see more residential development. The anticipated trip generation, as I mentioned, is comparable to what could occur under the existing zoning. Site plan locates the parking away from Briar Cliff Road and includes a sidewalk and Type 2 buffer yard along the Briar Cliff Road frontage. So we wanted to be sensitive to the residential character of Briar Cliff, and we feel like that this would still maintain that character. And it's consistent with the recommendations of Legacy 2030, in that it would promote a variety of housing types and the creation of neighborhoods, which would allow seniors to age in place. That's one of the goals of Legacy 2030. The revised condition here, this is under priority issuance of occupancy, Condition C, so we're removing the condition about installation of vegetation around the dumpster and replacing it with a little bit expanded verbiage there for the buffering along that slope. Basically, up to three varieties of evergreen trees planted in a staggered or triangular pattern, 10 to 12 feet on center. So staff does recommend approval, and the site plan meets UDO requirements, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions of staff at this time?
Yes. Okay. Mr. Roberts, in your opening remarks, you talked about it being a suburban style rather than an urban style.
Right.
And are you, what are you referring to in that?
Well, that's the specific recommendation of the area plan. So if you can look here in this image, you see this green border on the area plan?
Mm-hmm.
So if you go down to the legend, that says suburban form. So I guess that discussion was made in 2018 when this plan was adopted, that this area suburban form is acceptable. You see the red area down in here, closer to the activity center and apartments near Fair Lawn? That's the urban form, where the urban form starts closer going towards downtown.
In the staff comments, it talks about that you folks were happy with the location of the parking, the access points, the attractive building elevation, and additional landscaping. I guess I agree with you on additional landscaping. The parking, though, I know what work that the planning department is doing conceptually on Peters Creek, which again seems to be very similar to this in terms of the way traffic is flowing, to now move buildings up close to the sidewalk, rather than always having a parking lot as you're going down and seeing that, so, which does detract from what's And then in this application, we see that the need for walkability, and again, you put a parking lot in front instead of having an exit with a lawn and the sidewalk. Again, you're putting up another area that has various obstacles in it and things like that, which is the opposite of what we see in residential as being walkable.
Sure.
In addition, you talk about the access point. Now, it is a controlled access point now, but with the addition of Briar Cliff Village, we now have another access on the Briar Cliff, and it does seem strange that we wouldn't line them up together if we were trying to plan this out in terms of where traffic would be and where people traveling on Briar Cliff could expect traffic or something to come out. You may need to be a little bit clearer to me about what that gate, which kind of traffic that gate will be used for.
Sure.
Will it be used never, or whatever? And then the elevation piece, I guess the staff is feeling that a three-story elevation right in front of single-family homes, along with a higher rise change to the whole site, is an attractive visage? So if you could address those three points, appreciate it.
Sure. I'll first speak to the building placement. I don't think, the staff report said that we were happy about that, the parking lot location, but from a Briar Cliff Road, a Town and Country Estates Road perspective, we felt like that was the best design. This is not an ideal site to move the building up to the street because of the use and because of the neighborhood to the back, so it's, you know, kind of make your choice as far as which one we want to be most sensitive to. And we also felt like, because it was just one row of parking, it wasn't a double row of parking. Not happy about it, but they do have to park somewhere, and the site is a little tricky also from a topographic standpoint, and the use there. So we're not happy about it, but with the additional screening, I certainly hear your concerns about building placement. You know that I'm a big urbanist as far as building and walkability and urban form, but again, it's consistent with the area plan. We wanted to be sensitive to concerns previously expressed from residents along Briar Cliff as far as having the parking there. The building height is, it is a three-story building. It is, in our opinion, attractive building elevations with the material change in the roof pitch, which kind of helps to soften that vertical element. And directly out of the neighborhood concerns was a concern over the retaining wall, which was initially submitted. So they've removed that, increased the height of the building, but they're going to soften that hill with additional landscaping. So, and this is only 48 units. It's not, you know, 100, 200 apartment units. It's only 48 units. So that's kind of our position on the parking there, and maybe the director can access on, can talk about the access. Previous discussions, really, we, you know, we did not encourage access that deep into the neighborhood. That was prior to Briar Cliff Village being approved, which does change conditions out there. I will certainly admit that. But, you know, with it being an emergency access only, we're certainly comfortable with that location where it is. It will be gated, so.
Yeah, I'll just add a little bit to what Gary said. You know, as far as the urban versus suburban form, what we have in the adopted area plan calls for suburban form, and that's been in place. So we are going by what the, we're holding folks to what the adopted area plan calls for. I understand sort of the dilemma of the walkability, but regardless, we've got an adopted public policy here calling for suburban form, and this plan, in our opinion, conforms to that. With respect to the height of that building, Gary's right. You know, when this came in, it was a two-story building with the retaining walls, and I believe based off concerns from the neighborhood, the developers went back to the drawing board and said, "We can get rid of the retaining walls," but in exchange, it calls for the building to go up a story in height. And so I believe the whole reason we got to this is because... And so I believe the whole reason we got to this is because the developers were trying to accommodate some of the concerns made by the neighborhood, and I'm sure they can speak to that when they get up and, and make their presentation. And last, on the access point, again, that's, that's emergency only, uh, it's gated. The general public will not be able to come through there, so I think that's why the concern over lining up access points was not, it was not a big issue for our DOT staff, because it was gated and it was, uh, acts, emergency access only, similar to kind of what we were talking about on Academy Street earlier.
Yep. Good. Yeah, I mean, Jay, the, the thing about the height was, I remember this case last time, it was, you know, tall building right in front of folks. Now, the, the last one didn't have a retaining wall, I don't believe, so I don't, you know, I think this person's trying to change the height of the site rather than following the flow of the land or whatever, and, and have the building follow the flow of the land. But, uh, um, I, I want to be sure that we're learning something from each time things are handled and rejected by, uh, the governing bodies and things like that, and I'm not sure I sort of felt that with this. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Just, just for clarification, could you explain what the connection is between removing the retaining wall and increasing the height of the building? I don't get that connection.
Well, the retaining wall allowed them to spread the building out just a little bit more, because it gave a, a, a flatter pad for them to have that building. So once the retaining wall was done away with, their area of developability really kind of r- was restricted, so they had to go up vertically.
So they could get the same number of units?
That's correct.
Okay, I understand, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Okay. Let's, uh, go into the public hearing. Uh, first person to sign is the proponent, Gina Jarrett?
Um, can I get a moment?
Yes, please.
Gina Jarrett, forty-one sixty-four Greenmead Road. Um, for a moment, just imagine yourself in the future, in this future scenario. You're a resident of Town and Country or some other neighborhood similar to ours. You're possibly retired, your significant other has passed, for whatever reason, living with kids, your kids isn't an option. You might not want to continue to stay in your two-thousand-square-foot house. You have a little money, receiving social security and maybe a pension, a small pension if you're lucky, but probably not to buy, you don't have enough money to buy a condo or build a vacation home. You aren't, quote unquote, poor enough for any welfare or assistance programs, and you have no health problems serious enough to live in an assisted-living or nursing home. You don't want to live at just any old apartment complex, they probably want too much for rent, and there are probably too many young people. You're looking for a place that's geared toward your age group, your standard living, although in a smaller place, somewhere you can live your life and not have to worry about yard work and plumbing, et cetera. Retirement, retirement communities such as Arbor Acres have waiting lists a mile long. Sometimes the waitlist members die before they get their housing. I looked at this a little bit, researched on it, and I have, I personally know some folks who could benefit from something like this. There's a definite need for senior fifty-five-plus housing, for those on a folks' income who, on a fixed income who don't want to stay in their four-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath home. Low income doesn't necessarily mean no income. There is a, quote unquote, gray area, so to speak, between poverty and middle class. This is a growing area, a growing niche of people who need this type of housing. I think this property at the corner of Barcliff, Renolda is a good fit for this kind of, the property at the corner of Renolda and Barcliff is a good fit for this kind of development. A place like Renolda Landing needs to be somewhere close to shopping banks, medical offices, the library, restaurants. It needs to be near an established neighborhood like ours, like what they were probably used to, like where they used to live. The residents of Renolda Landing are adults, older adults. They won't be partying or trying to sneak into the pool or breaking into other people's properties, many don't even drive. This development keeps the property in some form of residential zoning instead of commercial. The developers have gone above and beyond, or plan to go above and beyond the ordinances requiring them as to, that they're required to follow as far as storm drainage and stormwater drainage and soil erosion. They've picked landscaping that will grow quickly and look nice. They have a plan in place to, for during construction as well as after construction and beyond to prevent damage to the surrounding properties. I realize that some of us are reluctant to trust again after what we've been through, but I believe these people have shown a professionalism and a spirit of goodwill. They've been very accessible and forthcoming with their plans. They've listened to what we've had to say, as you've noticed, and they've incorporated their information, the information that we gave them into the revised plan. Unlike a lot of builders and developers, they want to be good neighbors. I would ask that the board approve this plan so that we residents of Town and Country Estates will have to keep showing up at meeting after meeting after meeting to decide a fate of a property that's already an eyesore in our neighborhood. This development can only be an improvement. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Charlie Heritage?
Could grab my water real quick. Uh, thank you, members of the board, for having us today. Charlie Heritage, seventy-two oh-four West Friendly Avenue, Greensboro, North Carolina. We had a, uh, I'm with South Creek Development, uh, which is a developer out of, based out of Greensboro, um, and we sent letters to the neighbors, uh, sometime, uh, late February, asking them to, uh, meet us at the, um, oh, God, where were we? The library, sorry. Library off of Renolda Road, um, on March eleventh, and had our initial site plan, uh, in hand. Um, and there was, I believe, around thirty-five, maybe forty folks there. Um, there was a number of, uh, concerns and questions that were, um, brought up, ranging from, um, because I know this, uh, the history of the site, and there was another developer that came in that had a similar, similar proposal, similar plan, um, similar, uh, background as far as development, uh, and, and financing, that sort of thing. And so, um, there were some concerns as far as what type of folks would live there, um, what they'd be paying in rent, that sort of thing, and, um, I, I really couldn't explain it any more, uh, better than, uh, she could, but, um, I, I feel like we alleviated a lot of those fears, um, that night, um, and, uh, so first I just want to, uh, kind of touch on that. Um, we alleviated those fears that night, and then, uh, we, we also asked them to come to another meeting, um, after we, uh, listened to some of their concerns and, and, and questions about the site, um, and I'll get on a more technical, uh, aspect in just a minute, but, um, those concerns as far as, uh, you know, the, the folks that would be living there, um, that sort of thing, um, I think there was a lot of, uh, just, uh, concern and maybe, maybe unrest, and anytime people hear, you know, the words affordable housing, um, their, their, uh, light bulbs go off. And so I invited my, uh, the president of our management company, Partnership Property Management, to come and speak to the neighbors, uh, just this past Monday, and I really feel like that, uh, he did a, a great job, excuse me, of, um, kind of alleviating, uh, or, or getting rid of some of those fears. Um, you know, they manage over ten thousand units, um, over a hundred of them are, um, over a hundred of them are senior developments, and the average age in their communities is sixty-nine. Um, so a lot of, uh, a lot of, a lot of single, single folks and widows. So I believe as far as, you know, who lives there, I think, I think those, those fears have kind of, uh, been alleviated. Um, as far as the technical aspects of the site, one of the main things that we heard when we went in there, is there a clock to tell me how much time I've got?
You've got six minutes and twelve seconds.
Okay, perfect. That should be, should be good. So, um, one of the, uh, one of the main issues was, um, and I did check, matter of fact, my engineer was the same engineer on the previous design of the previous developer, developer that came in a couple of years ago, there was a retaining wall on that, uh, on that previous, uh, site plan. So one of the, one of the, uh, concerns that they had were, um, you know, driving up Briar Cliff, and, um, there was a twenty-foot retaining wall, ten feet off of the road, and then twenty feet off of that, or really like ten, fifteen feet off of that, you had a forty-foot tall building. So within, within thirty feet of the road, you had a twenty-foot retaining wall, and then you had a forty-foot building. So you can probably just imagine how massive that probably would look. Um, and when I asked them to design this, I said, "Hey, you know, let's design it the way the previous guy did, because, you know, it fit there," and we're actually, I think they had fifty-four units, we're actually doing forty-eight. Um, so that was one of the main concerns, was this massive retaining wall, um, and, so to alleviate that, what we did was, the, the building was L-shaped, um, originally, and so it came, it, it, it came like this, and then it went, like, went, you know, down like this, there was another wing right here. Um, so to do that, to eliminate that wall, we essentially reduced the size of the building, so now it's an L shape instead of a J, and we took those units, um, you know, just to make the math work, I needed forty-eight units. Um, and so, uh, we essentially made it from a two-story building into a three-story building. Um, that essentially eliminates the retaining wall, um, and, uh, it shrinks the building, and then, um, now, the corner of this building to the street is about seventy-five feet. So instead of it being thirty feet from the street, um, and sixty feet tall, twenty-foot building, uh, I mean, wall, forty-foot building, um, now, you know, we did, we did add, you know, to the size of the, uh, the, the height of the building, um, but it's seventy feet, um, seventy-five feet back from that. Um, I know I'm running out of time, so I wanted to get to the stormwater, um, and I will, um, answer those questions as well. So that's how we shrunk the building, we got it away from the, um, from the road. One of the other issues was the connection on Briar Cliff. Um, as the property owner, uh, you know, I, a lot of towns like interconnectivity, and so I always try to show that at, at first, um, and one of my main concerns of closing that access road, um, wasn't for the residents, because honestly, I really do believe they would just go out on Renolda Road left or right. Um, one of my main concerns is clo- in closing that was, um, fire access. And so, um, when I told the neighbors the other night that, "Hey, there will not be any, uh, entrance, um, or entry, exit or entry on Briar Cliff," I kind of felt like a sense of relief from the neighbors. Um, I don't think I was making that up, but anyway, um, so we have agreed to just do a manual gate there with a knock box, um, for emergency access only. I probably got about two minutes left.
Three.
Three. All right, doing well. So the, um, stormwater is a major concern, um, because currently there's a development across the street, and, um, you know, in that developer's defense, I mean, we've had the most rain, uh, in North Carolina in several years. Um, and so I drove through the other day, and, um, that pond that's in their neighborhood, um, is essentially red, um, at least it was last week, and, um, you know, I, I think any, any, uh, erosion control measures that have, uh, been, uh, been in place this year at any construction site across Forsyth County, uh, may have been breached, you know, um, because they're designed to a certain standard, um, but we've had rain that has exceeded even anybody's, um, any, anybody's thoughts, uh, as far as the amount of rain. So what we've agreed to do is, um, and this, you know, I don't know if we can add conditions here or not, but I promised the neighbors, uh, the other night, and we do want to be a good neighbor, that, um, on, as far as temporary erosion controls or during construction, um, we want to agree to design the temporary erosion control, uh, skimmer basin with a volume capacity that exceeds, uh, the NC State, uh, DEQ's requirements, um, with the, with a range of five to ten percent greater than what the, uh, the standard requirements are. And then, um, as far as post-construction permanent stormwater, again, that, you know, I think there's a, there's a big concern that, um, you know, we've got this, uh, this building here, and we're obviously increasing the impervious surface. So, um, the other thing we'd like to do is to agree to design the permanent stormwater control, uh, with a volume capacity that exceeds the city of Winston-Salem's requirements, um, again, within a range of five to ten percent, um, additional volume. Um, so we're basically, we've got designed underground tanks, um, that will collect the stormwater and then release it, and, um, we, uh, would like to design that, uh, to be five to ten percent greater, uh, than the capacity that's, that's standard. Um, how am I doing on my time?
Um, well, my phone went asleep. You've got fifty-three seconds.
Fifty-three seconds. Okay. Um, I think I'm good. I could, uh, answer any questions that you may have?
I'm sure there will be some.
Okay.
In a minute, so if you have any more conditions you want to, you can go ahead and do that.
Oh, yes, I do have one more. Um, I told the neighbors to, glad you, glad you said that. Um, we did have the dumpster down here, and, uh, it was just, I mean, it was just a bad design, really. I think, again, it was based on the last one, and so, uh, the engineer, uh, figured out a way where he could move it to this. Um, even though we're going to have a, a screen, uh, brick wall around it, um, I did tell them at the meeting the other night that I would, I would do plantings around it. So whatever y'all's standard requirements for dumpster screening is, we'll, we'll do that even though it's shifted a little bit. So those are the three that, uh, come to mind.
All right.
Thirty seconds.
All right.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak in support of this? You've got thirty seconds.
Oh, I was thinking their time, too? I didn't know that.
Okay. All right. Okay, then, we'll go to the opposition, uh, George Streblow? Is that?
My name is George Streblow. I reside at three-one-three-three Briar Cliff Road with my wife. I've lived there for over thirty years. Uh, I would like to speak just a moment, uh, in the way of background, as has already been discussed in the analysis. Uh, the geography of this site, Renolda Road at this point is the peak of a ridge. It plunges downhill in front to Old Town. On either side, it falls off rather dramatically. So we on the downhill slopes, we have a tremendous problem with runoff anytime it rains. I wonder if, is it permissible to pass some photos to the board to?
It is, but we'll, we will need to keep them for the file.
Takeoff.
Okay.
Uh, this is just to illustrate, uh, some of what we go through. Uh, picture one is my backyard with a four-foot culvert, which catches all the water coming from above. Any hydraulic engineer will tell you that a four-foot culvert handles a lot of water. Leading from that culvert across my backyard is a ditch running from four to six feet deep that carries this runoff. It runs all the way down the entire block to the next cross street of, uh, Wyck, uh, Wycliffe. There, it goes into a two-foot culvert of a strain, uh, storm drain, and you can see by a brick for scale. Um, in the past, our houses have flooded when this ditch, any sort of blockage happens, the water, of course, is going to back up. From that point, and these are photos one, two, and three, uh, from that point, the water is carried under the street, down th- under neighbors' yards, and it empties into a tributary ditch, and the following photos, four, five, six, show what happens from there. That's the same huge six-foot ditch that runs along people's houses and then across the front of their house. They have to have a bridge to get over. Uh, if you'll notice in the right-hand corner circled on the last photo, you'll see an exposed sewer line hanging in the air four feet above the bottom of the ditch. So we suffer from erosion control, erosion, uh, and much runoff. So, uh, it's very concerning about this development, and in light of, has already been mentioned, their twenty-house development across the street. This, uh, proposal to empty their stormwater into a ditch on Briar Cliff, uh, concerns me. Uh, it runs into a storm drain, but this is not your city utilities' storm drain that takes water off outside. It merely goes under the road and into another big ditch right through a property owner's yard, and then behind two more property owners' yard. It then runs underwater for Drive and comes out on an embankment in a homeowner's, uh, yard that owns the property and flows into this same lake mentioned above. So this proposal is going to dump even more water into this lake that we already have a problem going with, and I don't know how much is going to come down my side of the hill. So it's very concerning to us. Uh, we don't know how much stormwater, uh, studies have been made and what this might generate. Uh, but as has been mentioned, this is a, a terrible sloping hillside, basically. Um, the, our, the neighborhood is not against development, but this represents the last piece of property that borders and impacts our neighborhood. It sits on the entrance, the main entrance to our neighborhood, and I, I think the density is much too high for something backing up to a single-family residential neighborhood. Uh, as, as been stated, uh, As has been stated, the developers have done things to correct concerns we had, but the going up another story really exacerbates a height issue. We would, I can't say we, I'm only speaking for I right now, and this will be winding up, but I think there's a much better use and design for this land that either follows the land. We've suggested stair-stepping buildings down to follow the land. As has been mentioned, the parking in front, it fits the plan, but it pushes the building fifty-three feet more back toward Briar Cliff that I think a more suitable parking on the north side could be achieved. That would be on top of this underground cistern might work and put the building into more walking accessibility to a sidewalk. So we're not against development, but, you know, we would just like to see the best use of this property as the last remaining one that would impact our neighborhood the least. The impact is another concern in that it all sounds nice, but we just don't know. When questioned about the, how many people could be in the number of units, it was rather jarring to find that in a one-bedroom unit, two people plus one could be there, and a two-bedroom unit, four people plus one could be there. So that gives you a spread of extremes of, at the least, one person per one-bedroom, two people per two-bedroom would be seventy-two people. The other extreme of the absolute maximum would be, I think, a hundred and ninety-two people. And of course, I don't think either extreme would be realistic, but somewhere certainly an average in the middle would come up, which is a hundred and thirty-four people. That's still, I think, too high a density for the entryway to our neighborhood of single-family In closing, I would just say that kind of the history of this is that all of these tax credit financing-type developments are on a tight time schedule. So only three weeks ago was our neighborhood made aware of a public meeting. That was like late February, February twenty-seventh, on a Monday. As the developer has said, there was a lot of pushback on what they had there. And to their credit, they went back, they said, let us come back in two weeks, we'll see what we can do and make changes. Well, that two weeks was three days ago. So I would ask the board to, in three days, the chatter you hear is both pro and con all over the place. It's not a bad idea. We're not against affordable housing for the elderly, but we've had no chance to discuss this. We've had no chance to poll our neighborhood association or the neighborhood in general to get kind of a consensus. It, it could go either way, but there's no time to do that. So I would humbly ask for, in the best-case scenario, to leave the zoning as it is, RS9, which would allow twenty-seven units to be developed in a much less intensive impactful way on our neighborhood, and at the least, to grant a continuance to give us a chance to give the planning board feedback from what the neighbors feel. It could be either way. I can't speak to that. But that's why I can't say we, because we've had no chance to poll members. And it's just been the few people who've been to a neighborhood meeting and chit-chat on the Nextdoor website. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. How much time we have left?
Two and a half minutes.
Okay.
Good afternoon. My name is Thomas Ryder, R-I-D-E-R. I live in forty-one sixty-one Wyck Cliff Drive, Winston, Town and Country Development, zip code's two-seven-one-oh-six. I stand in opposition to this building, primarily, I think, at the good purpose of for the building, what it intends to do, but it's in the wrong location. If you take a look at Renolda Road from Yatkinville Road to Fairlawn Drive, there's basically one-story structures. We're talking about a three-story structure. If you go to Fairlawn down to the business park, basically one-story structures. This thing sticks out like a sore thumb. And we're looking at the good side of this building from Renolda Road back. Basically, the problem that we run into is when you go from Renolda back to Briar Cliff. This, this, the developers, from the, from the plan that they have, they're need to have a pad of about three-point-two acres. To do that, they have to put tremendous amount of fill in this area. So from the emergency entrance back to the end there, you're going from ten-foot height to twenty-foot height on there. That's from ground level up, and that's all fill from Briar Cliff out. In addition, now we're talking about a three-story structure, so we're talking about another fifty feet, something of that nature. So you're going to have a total height roughly about sixty feet. We're talking from Briar Cliff, looking to the top of those buildings. And the buildings on Briar Cliff are one-story structures. Basically, they're arranged homes on there. Think in terms of Pilot Mountain. You're down there, you're looking up at this big structure. There's no way, really, to mask that building on there. The, secondly, the concern, as I discussed a little bit before, is the amount, how are you going to handle the stormwater? The structure itself, or the pad, the three-point-two acres, all the, all the sewer, or, I'm sorry, all the stormwater goes from one side to the other side of the building, goes into a retention area, and then that is piped out to Briar Cliff Road. The drawing, basically, it ends there. That's where the water ends. I've asked, we've, we've asked before in terms of the amount of rainfall that this containment structure will handle, we don't know. Listen, I'm from the north. I know I'm living in the south. I know in the south, you have these storm cells, storm cells, you have hurricanes that come up and through here, you have systems that go through that drop a considerable amount of water here, in, either in a short period or, you know, in a broader period of time. In the previous, and the point I'm making here, in the previous development, we had in Briar Cliff Village there, they had a similar, they had a plan for this, for the number of houses there, they had a drawing in there for containment, or for a holding pond for the, the water. And I asked the developer at that point, how much rainfall would that hold? He said, well, this is just drawn in at that particular time. So up to the planning, up to the zoning, that's what they had on there. What happened, the developer got in there, scraped the land, the rain came down, the water, the mud went on down and flooded and created havoc down below that entire area. This is what my, at least my concern is, is that that containment structure is not going to be adequate. It's taken three-point-two acres of water into that structure, and it's going to be piped out into Briar Cliff Road. There's nothing being said of what's going to happen at that point on there.
Go ahead and conclude your remarks. We've gone over the time limit, so go ahead and wrap up if you would, please.
Okay. The city's, the problem with this is that the location is, that facility could be located in another, in another location. Fairlawn Drive is, is another, is a similar location. It's flat, has grocery store, banking, libraries, all within walking distance on there, and it doesn't have the problems that you have with this particular site. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Could I ask him a question?
Yes.
Mr. Ryder, could I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
I, I know in Town and Country, there were some big issues with the lakes.
With what? I'm sorry.
With the lakes.
Okay, right.
And I know that the city had to come in and share some of the cost of that. Is, are the lakes maintained, the spillways and all that, by homeowners' association?
I can't speak to that, sir. My, my property is not located there. It's my understanding that the lake is owned or maintained by the properties adjoining it. I think they have a lakefront association there. So, but as far as, I think they're responsible for the lake. But I, I'd have to defer to somebody else as long.
Well, and I can, I can ask the developer whether they would share responsibility for that or not, you know?
Well, as it stands right, as it stands right now, there's nothing in the, in the plans or whatever. From that point where it exits under Briar Cliff, that's what happens. If there's damage, and the, and from articles in the, in the Winston-Salem Journal where other property owners have had problems with erosion of their pits, like erosion trenches that are, you know, ten, fifteen deep, feet deep and twenty feet wide, the city, I believe, will assist with them, but the property owner has to kick in on that amount of money. And so, and my, my consideration is, why not do the planning to correct that, that problem? And there's nothing in there that indicates there is.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's, yeah, that does declare the public hearing closed.
Can I, you didn't offer us an opportunity to ask some questions to some of the presenters, like the?
You may do that now, yes. Who's you like to ask?
Well, I wanted to, to talk to Mr. Heritage. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for investing in Winston-Salem for affordable housing. Much needed. So you're talking five to ten percent on this. I really applaud you for that, too, because I'd already talked to the planning board after I saw the red mud run in from Briar Cliff Village into the lakes down there. Who are you talking with that's giving you that sense that five to ten percent will control, will control that? And you've mentioned two issues. You've got the erosion deering building.
Right.
Where you're having substantial earth moving. And then you, later on, it's going to be the stormwater because of impervious surface.
Right, yes. So Gene Muston with Borum Wade and Associates, he's here today, actually, so we could, we could ask him about the five to ten percent. But he's the one that I've been talking to about. And I do want to just, I do want to bring up that, and just make this clear, that it is two separate things. One is the erosion control during construction, which is what they're dealing with now. And then one is after, I mean, I guarantee, well, I can't guarantee, because I'm not building it, but after, what's that, it's Briar Cliff Village, I believe is what it's called?
Right across the road.
Yeah, once that is, is up and running and they've got, you know, grass in the yard and trees and landscaping, you shouldn't see the same issues, the homeowners down there should not see the same issue. So I would, I'm curious whether or not there was an issue beforehand. I've got a deal in down east, which is its own nightmare, but, you know, they're on a ditch system, which everybody down east is on a ditch system. And anytime it rains, a good solid rain, those ditches are overflowing. So, you know, my question is to the folks in that community, is there already an issue there that is causing this? Prior to even Briar Cliff Village being built, I don't, I don't know the answer to that, but I'd be curious before I start promising taking care of a lake that's, you know, quarter of a mile from my site, whether or not there was already this, this previous condition. So I know that's a long way to answer your five to ten percent question.
No, but I'm glad you're looking at that, and I'm glad you have an engineer or something that, that is looking at that. Just wanted to be sure that that jive with our city engineer in terms of understanding that that will not have a repeat of what has just happened in there. But, you know, the other thing that we've certainly experienced in other developments is with the volume of water coming off an impervious surface, it then, as Mr. Streblo was saying, erodes those ditches, which then puts sediments in the lake. And, and how do you keep the volume of water from continuing to do that as it's doing now?
Right, so the volume of water, you know, we're not, we're not increasing the size of the land, so the volume of water is going to be the same. And so what we're, what we're controlling is the outflow of water or the containment of that water. So in other words, if the, you know, the same amount of rain falls on a three-point-two acre site, whether there's something there or not, it's just a matter of how do you control that water? I mean, I think that's probably, that's probably the question, is how do you, how do you contain that water? And what we're doing is, we've already got a system that's got underground storage tanks, and we are taking those calculations. Gene knows better than I do. We're taking those calculations and we're saying, all right, we're going to increase what's required here, what is a standard thing. And I think it's probably to the tune, it's going to cost me, I don't know, another fifty, sixty thousand dollars just to do that, not to mention the thirty or forty thousand dollars worth of trees that I'm agreeing to plant as well. And I would imagine, I don't know as to be sure, but if you've got that many trees, it's going to take longer for the rain to get down to the ground than it would if, you know, that big buffer yard was not there. Does that, does that make sense?
Your post-development quantity and quality has to be, it has to be better, or it has to be as good.
As good.
As pre-development.
That's correct.
Right? And you've got a stormwater plan, and it can't be any worse than it is now.
Correct.
For the design storm.
And it should be, mathematically, it should be five to ten, five to ten percent better than it is currently per, per given storm. That's what the purpose of the, of the.
And that's what the standard is. It's already five to ten percent better. So we're saying we're going five to ten percent more than that, so.
All right.
Yes.
Let me, let me ask you also about the, the building. Where are the HVAC units going to be located?
They are on the outside, right outside the units.
So if you're looking at that thirty-foot building there, they're, they're down below in the?
In the, yeah, so there'll be a, there'll be a sidewalk along the building, and they'll be within that sidewalk. And so there'll be landscaping between the sidewalk.
Independent units, not a large?
No, no, yeah, they're, they're independent, yes. So you'll have, it's an L shape, so on the backside, you know, you'll have, I don't know, I'm just going to guess, maybe sixteen to eighteen on the backside, there'll be probably sixteen to eighteen on the front, so what's that?
That's what I was trying to figure out.
Okay, and then ten on the, ten on the left-hand side, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
While we've got Mr. Heritage up there, can we, can we pin down sort of the extra-volunteered erosion control condition and the volunteered stormwater condition to make sure we're clear on that for enforcement purposes? If you could repeat again what you were volunteering with respect to erosion control measures?
Yes, it was, let me get my, let me get my note, because I got it written down.
Right, and, and again, I don't think it could be a ra, I mean, if it's going to be five to ten, it needs to be five, or it needs to be ten. I don't think, I don't think, we need a sliding range.
Yep, yep.
Well, and Gene may want to come address that, I don't know, I mean, I'm, I'm not a stormwater engineer, I just, you know.
I'm not either, so let's let Gene answer that.
Good idea.
I think that it might be better if you had a range, because when you do a stormwater calculation, one engineer might differ with another engineer over a one percentage point, and you do all the calculations, you say, I came up with eight percent better, and the other engineer says, boy, I mean, I came up with nine, and the other engineer said, I came up with seven and a half. If I say it's going to be ten and I'm held to ten, I don't know that anybody with a P E seal can guarantee ten exactly, but you might give a range of, you know, five to ten or ten to twelve, or whatever it ends up being.
Mr. Muston, let me stop. Give us your name and address for the record.
Yeah, I'm sorry, that's right. My name is Gene Muston. I'm with Borum Wade and Associates Engineers and Surveyors in Greensboro, six-twenty-one Eugene Court, Suite one-hundred, Greensboro, North Carolina, two-seven-four-oh-one. And so that's the reason I would try to explain to you, you might want to give a range to whoever's doing the calculations, such that they know where they're trying to, to kind of hit here, because you're going to, you're going to be a little bit off.
But if it's an enforceable standard, could you not just say not, not less than X percent?
You could say not less than. You could do it that way, too. You could say not less than a percentage, that's right.
So, so one thing I would probably like to do is, we do have Joe Fogarty with our Stormwater Division in attendance today, and ultimately, this will be Joe's job to make sure if we add this condition that it is being met. And as he's sitting here, here in the discussion, I want to make sure Joe has clear language on what's being asked of him. So I'd, I'd like to get Joe's thoughts on what's being discussed here.
Okay. Yeah, I'm Joe Fogarty. I'm the stormwater engineer with the Stormwater Division, so I will be reviewing this. I will say upfront, all of these conditions, I'm pretty much hearing about today for the first time, so I haven't had a chance to really look in depth at them. I will say, do you have concern with a five, a range of five to ten percent? When we've done something like this in the past, the current ordinance requires, we specify certain storm events. So for our peak runoff, we have two-ten and twenty-five-year So for our peak runoff, we have two 10 and 25-year events in the ordinance, and a 25-year volume increase. In similar situations in the past, when we've put extra conditions as part of a planning board approval, we've tied them down to a certain storm. Typically, we go up to the 50-year. Then it's much easier for me to say, okay, you're now designing to the 50-year peak in volume. I don't know, the 5 to 10%, is that a 5 to 10% you're saying of the rate increase? Are you getting 5 to 10% of what volume addition, a 25-year volume?
I was anticipating that we would do your 25-year volume, post-construction volume requirement, and then increase my volume containment, and then that would give me the ability to reduce the, you know, to, you know, to work with that 10% more volume containment. If you want to go to a storm, I think we could rather do a storm also.
I think staff would be more comfortable with a 50-year event.
And Joe, I know you're not, just so we can clarify, are the same concerns for, I know you don't do erosion control, so that's not really your area, but would you have the same concerns related to that? I don't know how they do their design, it's a little bit different than stormwater.
Yeah, I don't do the erosion control design. I think the design, off the top of my head, and I may be wrong in this, but I'm pretty sure it's the 10-year peak event. So that situation with Briercliff Village that you're talking about across the street, what's happening out there is not a post-construction issue right now, because it's still in the erosion control phase. That pond that's out there is an erosion control device, it's for the 10-year event. It will be, as will be the case with this site, once the site is developed and it becomes stable, the stormwater becomes what's called a post-construction device, and it's, they're done to a much higher standard, there's operation and maintenance agreements in place, and sureties, and so on and so forth. I will talk about one other issue that came up, is where the outlets, and I think there was talk about piping it from the outlet all the way down the street. That actually goes against all good stormwater principles, because now you're putting something in a pipe in a steep watershed, which is speeding up the velocity even more, so it's going to come out at some point even quicker. It doesn't allow for any infiltration into a swale, doesn't allow for any evaporation. Not alone that, if it's in the right of way, we're not even sure staff, if this is put on as a condition, that this can even work. We don't even know what grade the lower, the immediate structure downstream is, so if it can be done even. And if it's done, it's in the right of way, and now the city's taking over a new pipe system that we're now responsible for maintaining. And of course, then you're eliminating the ditch, which leads into, now that the ditch is gone, do we have to put in carbon gutter? Which again, goes against good stormwater practices, so.
Is there a 25-year standard for during construction erosion control? I know you say, right now, the goal is 10 years.
There is no 25-year standard.
So there's no definition of it?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're back to the conditions, I mean, what are we looking for?
Joe, can you suggest sort of a framework of the wording that's enforceable for you? And if the petitioner's agreeable to that, then that maybe gives us some guidance on what staff could add to this?
Obviously, meet our current ordinance standards, which that's already in the ordinance. I think as an extra condition, then we would say that the developer shall control the 50-year peak runoff rate to the pre-development rates, and also capture the increase in volume of the 50-year storm, and release that over a two- to five-day period. I think somebody, I can't remember who, it might have been Mr. Heritage, said that the volume does not increase. I would like to correct that, the volume of stormwater does increase when you develop a piece of property, because, yes, you have the same area, but your surface types are different. So your curve numbers equate to, you do a pre-development calculation, it could be 10,000 cubic feet before the development, but when you come back with buildings, parking lots, it doesn't allow for infiltration, which changes the curve number. When you run the calculations, there is an increase in volume, excuse me, which the whole point of these systems is that they capture that volume, they're sized to hold that volume. And instead of giving it a gully washer, they have to release it over a two- to five-day period.
So we're doing a post-construction here now?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Heritage, you okay with that, the 50-year?
Yes.
Okay. Now, the pre, during construction, what's the next?
Can you offer any guidance as far as if anything above and beyond minimum ordinance requirements for erosion control design?
Again, I don't review for erosion control. Obviously, if you make a developer go to a higher storm event standard, you're going to get a better output. You know, if I suggest a 25-year peak event, then that's better than the current 10-year, which I think, again, is what is currently in erosion control standards.
Mr. Muston, is that doable?
It's kind of like pick, it's pick your fruit, it's 25-year, 50-year, 100-year, the further you go up, the more, the better it goes.
Let's go reasonable at 25.
Okay. Mr. Heritage, you okay with that?
Yeah, that's fine, I mean, if the standard is 10, you know, for during construction, and the post-construction standard is 25, then it wouldn't make sense to start at, go to 50, so 25.
Are you talking about 25-year peak, or 25-year peak and volume? Because right now, the erosion control standard just talks about peak runoff rates. So if you're looking to up it to the 25, yeah, they'll reduce it to the 25-year pre-development for the erosion control standard, but that's still not addressing volume. Whereas the post-construction ordinance addresses peak and volume.
Right.
Erosion control just addresses peak.
Mr. Muston, can you help us with this?
Let me think about this, I think if we do a 25-year peak, I'm going to have to give additional volume anyways to get there.
Yeah, but it's all, we're kind of getting into nuts and bolts of engineering, where this is all...
And we're not engineers up here, I believe.
This all comes down to orifice sizes and outlet structures, weir sizes, to control that volume and release it at a certain rate, and release that volume at a certain time.
I think I would like to propose that we control the 25-year volume in the skimmer basin.
During construction.
When you say control the 25-year volume, as in size at the hole that volume?
Yes.
But what about release rate?
So the release rate would have to be...
Come up to the microphone, so we can...
Let me just think about this for a second, so we would be, at that point, you would be... Oh, yeah, we could do that through the skimmer.
The reason I'm talking about a release rate is the post-construction ordinance does have a two- to five-day release rate for the 25-year volume, because that volume is held. And again, the purpose of that is, instead of preventing a gully washer coming down in the first few hours, this extra volume is held and released slowly over a period of time. Yes, the neighbors out there will see runoff in a ditch that they had not seen before, that's going to be, because that extra volume has got to be released over a longer period of time, so they're going to see a trickle of water in that ditch line, possibly within up to five days after a storm event.
So what do we have, Aaron?
Mr. Muston, did you agree, or did you have volunteer wording on that erosion control condition that you'd like to offer?
Okay, so I guess we'd offer that the skimmer basin, for the temporary erosion control construction plan, be designed to control a release of the 25-year storm through the orifice, and have a volume to allow that to happen. And so we won't be using the weir, I guess we'll use the, release the, release the 25-year storm through the orifice, yes.
Okay.
To the pre-development rate.
You got that, Aaron?
I'm curious.
We'd like to work.
Again, I don't review for erosion control, but what, in the erosion control state, there's no impervious surface theoretically on the ground, so how do you calculate the pre-development rate? Are we looking at the pre-development rate for the site? You're going to calculate that rate for the site when it's fully built out?
Usually, they change your Q to a lower rate during construction, because there's no impervious, so the Q changes to a lower. So you would use like a lower C value.
Or that's just for pre-development, but what I'm saying is...
During construction, they drop your C.
We've kind of landed on, we've kind of landed on the post-construction volume control, and we have an agreement on that. I think it may behoove us, if planning board is interested in that being a condition of approval related to the erosion control measures and having those beefed up, maybe to come up with some squishy language, you know, an enhanced erosion control plan, and then allow the project engineer and our storm, and the erosion control engineer, Matthew Osborne, to meet on that, kind of discuss the plan, and come up with the condition language that we can actually take to city council, as opposed to trying to create it here on the fly.
Works for me.
Yeah, we'll work with Matt to do that, that's fine.
Or we can continue crunching numbers.
All right.
You mean to say squishy language?
I don't know what I said.
You didn't need to say that. Squishy was not the right word.
We agreed to work with Matt Osborne to come up with a condition that is satisfactory to staff, to increase the temporary erosion control measures during construction.
I think staff understands where we're going with this, and it's just a matter of getting that ironed out between, like Chris said, city staff and Gene, to make sure we all understand. Last thing we want to do is put a condition on here, and then Matt not understand it or not have a clear understanding. Let's get the experts in the room agree on the language, and then we'll have that finalized to go forward to city council. And we need to do that, if this is part of the motion, we need to do that soon.
Okay. And Mr. Heritage used his last 30 seconds to offer some additional plantings around the dumpster, I think, so, okay, so I guess you got that down as well, okay.
I would like to add that, I think it came up about, has the city any involvement in those lakes? To the best of my knowledge, no. I think a few years ago, the city did do a capital improvements project and replaced the culvert at Kingston Road, down near the Town and Country Swimming Pool area. So that has helped improve that situation, because there was prior flooding at the swimming pool location.
All right, we've got some conditions worked out, but we don't have a motion to approve this thing yet, so, but...
Yeah, I want to move approval.
I'll second that.
Motion, Mr. Lamb, second Mr. Grubbs with these conditions, changes, discussion.
Well, I'd like to say that I do appreciate these additional conditions, because it's going to impact the folks further down the hill, as has been pointed out by the speakers. I haven't heard a lot from the neighborhood in terms of opposition to this, and in fact, I'm hearing that they have come around to sort of, hearing that this may work in their neighborhood. I would disagree with Mr. Streblo, this area is, these plots are already developed, so it isn't like this is the last development. We could have another developer come in here, buy houses up, and say, they want to change the zoning, too. So we don't have to force this zoning to change, but if the neighborhood isn't as concerned about it, and if we've got good conditions from the builder, that they will work to keep the same things from happening as before, I certainly feel a better level, and I hope that the city council will take up any additional issues, which we haven't heard here, or, and respond, I hope, giving the neighborhood a longer period of time to react to that city council meeting, if additional things come up in that period of time, is the thing.
All right, thank you. Yes.
Yeah, I just look at it a little bit differently. I am concerned about a number of things. One is the quickness of this, the three weeks period in which the neighborhood had a chance to get its act together and decide how it wants to proceed on this. And what I'd be interested in knowing is how the neighborhood as a whole feels about this trade-off between the wall versus the height of the building, because it is a trade-off, and people might feel differently about it. It'd be nice to know what the neighborhood consensus was on that. And I do see the stormwater issue as serious, very serious, based on the pictures that Mr. Streblo passed out. And one of the letter writers wrote, saying that, you know, it's important to get this right, because as long as the developers follow state laws, there's no recourse, legal or financial, for downhill neighbors whose property is damaged by new development. So I would like to be comfortable upfront, instead of just, you know, passing the problem along, to be worked out later. I just, and I'm not comfortable at this point. I see, you know, the two problems as very significant. And, you know, regarding that lake, my understanding is that it was at least, close to 20 years ago, maybe 15 years ago, the city did put over $100,000 into the dam, because the dam failed. And because it was on a city street, the city took responsibility, so we have put public money into that. So I would just, I would like to see this continued, basically. I would be, I think there needs to be more time, and given the discussion that we saw between the engineers who were trying to work all this out, I really think that we need to have more time to work it out, and have the neighbors have the opportunity to hear what the engineers say, so maybe they get more comfortable with it. So I would like to propose, you know, an alternative motion, just to continue this.
I think three weeks, certainly in the world that many of us that work in the private sector operate, is an eternity. Three weeks is a long time, from my perspective. I'm sure for a lot of these folks that are working on this project, three weeks is a long time. I understand that everybody's busy, but if it's as important as people are saying it is, then it seems like in somewhere in that three-week span, somebody could have gotten together and talked about this. So I don't really put a lot of weight in the three-week thing. As I sat here and listened to this, you know, there's things we can do things about and things we can't. We can't make water flow uphill, yeah, that's just not going to work. Grade impacts construction, those are just physics, you know? But what I do hear, and I've heard here today, and I've heard a lot and read a lot in the paper, is that we've got an affordable housing problem in this community. Heard that a lot from city council. And here you've got folks trying to do something about it, and we did something because of the grade, which actually reduced our impervious surface, but that's not, it's kind of a, I'm hearing these folks can't win, no matter what they do. And, you know, I think it's an opportunity for them to bring some affordable housing to a community that needs it, and that's why I seconded the motion.
Well, we have a motion right now to continue. Is anyone second that motion?
I would, I'm not in a rush on this thing, so I'd second it.
Okay, so we have a motion for continuance, from those in favor of the motion to continue.
Firstly, you had a motion to approve.
Yeah. Mr. Lamb made the motion, Mr. Grubbs seconded it.
A motion there to continue it, though, I'd like to, I mean, to be able to vote on the motion to approve.
However you want to proceed, I was just pointing that out, I had written that down, there was a motion to approve, a motion to second for that.
I understand, but we also have a request to continue it, so...
Got it. Well, I mean, again, a lot of times you will ask the petitioner whether or not a continuance would work with their schedule, I don't know whether...
I'm not sure this board's in the mood for continuance. I don't think it's necessary. If they are, we'll ask them in a minute, but anyway, we have a...
We have a substitute motion.
Motion to continue for a month, and we have a second to that. Any discussion on the motion for continuance? Those in favor of continuance? Opposed? The motion fails. Now, we have a motion for approval, there's discussion on that, further discussion.
I agree with you, so.
Seven days would be, would be allowed to fix it, not three weeks.
Those in favor of approval? Opposed? Motion fails eight to one, passes eight to one, excuse me. Okay, thank you. And I will point out that the neighbors do have opportunity to city council between now and then to review whatever they come up with, so that I have an opportunity to be heard again. Okay? Move on to staff report.
All right. First of all, I'd like to thank Councilor McIntosh for joining us this afternoon. I'll just note, we had our second US 158 Beltway meeting on March 12th this week, we had about 20 or so people there, and it was a good meeting out in Walkertown. Our next Peters Creek Parkway Corridor Plan Meeting is on March 26th at the Georgia Taylor Rec Center from 6:00 to 7:30. And the only other thing I had was to turn it over to Desmond to talk to you a little bit about our caseload that we have coming in April.
So, this agenda was a little heavier than the one last month, and next month's agenda is going to be heavier than this one. Right now, we've, we are looking at 14 items on the agenda, including the three cases that were continued today. A number of those are special-use zoning or final development plan, or site plan amendments. I think I'm looking at one of the, one of the 11, or I'm sorry, one of the nine rezoning cases are, is general use, and the rest are special-use, special-use limited, or site plan amendment, or final development plan. We have, one of those items is a special-use permit for an LCID, we have one subdivision, and then another land residential development district.
In addition to that, you also have the Clear Code UDO text amendment, which takes the existing UDO, puts it into the new format, which will be on there, as well as the, your first crack of, at the fence ordinance, that came out of Community Development Housing General Government Committee.
And our pay.
Anything else on the staff report?
That's it.
Anything, for the good of the order, anyone?
I feel like we're getting back to the good old days.
Maybe the old days, now, I don't know about the good part.
All right, motion to adjourn.
Take it. All in favor?
We're adjourned. Thank you.
Oh, I left and they were-